Helen Perdue the Third, Council Members A Ralph Casey, David K. Clements, Benjamin K. Mullins, Mark H. Newbill, and Tyler J. Tyler Lee. Also participating this evening are staff members as noted.
We'll do the pledge.
Prior to asking for approval of the agenda, since there's a quorum that's been met by the Rocky Mount Town Council, and we've assembled for this meeting, a vote has to be taken to allow Council Member and Vice Mayor Stockton to participate in this meeting by phone conference due to him being absent in person due to an illness. The location of Vice Mayor Stockton is at his home here in Rocky Mount, Virginia. The policy to allow remote participation in the meeting was approved at the regular council meeting on December 12th, 2022, and it was passed by unanimous vote. In order to allow Vice Mayor Stockton to participate remotely, I will need a motion to allow such.
I will make the motion to allow Mr. Vice Mayor Stockton to allow in the meeting.
Thank you.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Stockton, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Prior to the approval of the agenda, we need to add another closed session item. That will be Session 2.2-3711A.1 for the discussion of appointments to boards or commissions. With that addition, do I have an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have the hearing of citizens. We have one person signed up to speak this evening, Ms. Glenna Moore. Ms. Moore.
I have to be very careful. You notice how many history teachers are sitting out there? In 1965, during Franklin County's Freedom of Choice School Integration System, I was the only 13-year-old black girl in my Virginia history class. My history teacher taught that the Freedmen's Bureau was intrusive and unnecessary during Reconstruction. She said the South was overrun by Yankee carpetbaggers, white scallawags, and lazy Negroes. I've recently learned that Jubal Early pushed this lost cause philosophy and allowed Southerners to declare the reason for secession from the Union was noble and for the good cause of keeping Southern culture. I would like to pay homage to the four United States Military Officers that were assigned to Franklin County and the town of Rocky Mount to protect newly freed slaves, which likely included my great-grandparents, Robert and Laura Young. The most notable of the four officers was Lieutenant De Knight, a 31-year-old white military officer from New York stationed in Rocky Mount between 1865 and 1868 to supervise Franklin County's Reconstruction, a requirement for Virginia to re-enter the Union. He represented the United States Bureau of Refugees, Freedmen, and Abandoned Lands, commonly known as the Freedmen's Bureau. According to an article by Charles Wall, Professor of History at Fairham College, First Lieutenant De Knight's job was to protect and advance Franklin County's ex-slaves during the immediate aftermath of the Civil War by providing relief in the form of food, clothes, clothes and seed grain, and to secure work and enforce labor contracts with prior slave owners. They also informed the Freedmen of their voting rights under the Civil Rights Act of 1866 and the Fourteenth Amendment. The Bureau made sure that Franklin County black males registered and voted without harassment. The lieutenant reported tense, often bitter, interaction with Rocky Mount local whites who called the agents Yankee aggressors and occupiers. They frequently sang Confederate songs and were disrespectful to the American flag and tried to intimidate freed blacks from making and flying a United States flag. The military officers reported numerous cases of assaults against freed black citizens, particularly if the black person was being insolent or uppity. One agent reported that local Franklin County justices of the peace refused to recognize white crimes committed against blacks. Because of pressure from the Freedmen's Bureau, two schools for black children and adults were established, one in Gogginsville and one in Rocky Mount. I suspect that's near Bethel AME Church. I suppose I can understand Franklin County's frustration of losing the war and the horrific economic conditions caused by the war. Lieutenant De Knight felt that was partially the reason for the heinous behavior of Franklin County and Rocky Mount whites during Reconstruction. But it's sad that once Southerners got back into power, their pent-up anger and revenge was unleashed through Jim Crow segregation policies, Ku Klux Klan activity, and Confederate statues, all of which existed unfortunately here in the county and town that we love.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Having no one else signed up, we will now move to the approval of the consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Stockton.
Thank you.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a special item this evening, the recognition to the Rocky Mount Police Department for receiving the award from the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association. Mr. Wood, if you would.
So the Rocky Mount Police Department has been recognized recently by the, I'm gonna say it out and then I'll say the whole thing and then use the abbreviation after that. FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, short, it's called FBI LIDA, and it's called the Agency Trilogy Award, which means that the command staff at the police department has gone through a series of training courses that are offered through this FBI Academy. I'm gonna read a little bit from the press release just to give everyone an idea of what we're talking about. The FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association announced that it awarded the Rocky Mount Police Department with the FBI LIDA Agency Trilogy Award. The award honors the department's successful completion of a cutting-edge leadership training program designed to strengthen public safety leadership worldwide. And then I'm gonna skip some of the other information that's in there, but at the very end, it talks about how common or really rare this distinction is. Since the inception of the Agency Trilogy Award, 134 law enforcement organizations have been awarded for excellence in leadership and completion of FBI LIDA's flagship course, or courses, the Command Leadership Institute, the Supervisor Leadership Institute, and the Executive Leadership Institute. And so that 134 agencies that have received this award, that's over the whole country. So that's a very, very small percentage of the law enforcement agencies around the United States. So we have an award to present that I think Mayor Perdue's gonna present to Chief Young. And then Chief, where is Chief? Oh, there he is. He's over there. I was looking over that. Chief, if you want to say a few words about when you get up here about kind of what's involved and why this is important for the department.
That was a good one, Tyler.
Tried.
For Ally.
Here. Wherever you want to. I'll be in the background of that mark. I get. I land the kinks. Come closer.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Town Manager and Council. Just very briefly, when I came to the town of Rocky Mount, I knew that in order to build a strong department, you have to have strong leadership. And one way to develop strong leadership is to give them the tools that they need to do the job properly. And I had already attended a couple of the FBI LIDA courses before I came here. I finished my last one up while I was here. And then my command staff have taken all three of those classes, the supervisor, the executive, and the command. And it's just a commitment by them, and I appreciate that. And again, my training budget is approved by the town council, and I appreciate you investing in us and helping us to be a better department. So just thank you very much. I don't know if you wanted, so again, as Robert said, Town Manager said, we had 134 agencies across the country that have received this award. And so I think it's great that my department and my command staff were committed to earning that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have two public hearings tonight, the first being the debt issuance. Mr. Wood, if you would, present.
Okay. Kyle, are you ready? Reminder to council and for those in the audience that probably don't follow these things closely because it's not something that's really exciting to follow, but Davenport is the town's financial advisor. They advise the town on investments, debt, any kind of financial matters. And so Kyle is here tonight to talk to us about this specific issue just to kind of set it up while he's getting ready or while they're getting him ready over there. The town put out a notice that it was interested in issuing up to $11 million in debt. That's kind of what started this process, so there was a notice in the paper and some other things we had to do on that notice. The idea was that we've got some current projects that needed to be funded with debt that council had already signaled that they would do when the budget was approved a year ago. So this is the current budget that we're in. The $11 million number actually had an extra $5 million in there. Depending on the interest rate, the idea was that depending on the interest rate or the financing terms that we could get at this time, that might be better than some of the debt that we have currently. And so the idea was that that might essentially refinance some of that debt. It didn't work out that way, and so the amount that we're actually asking council to consider is $6 million. And I think you're gonna go into the specific projects that are in. Yep, in there, okay. So I won't get into that then, but I just, I wanted to clarify that because the notices all say $11 million, but you'll find that during the presentation that what we're really talking about is $6 million.
Very good, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. Nice to see you all this evening. And again, thank you to the manager for the nice introduction there. What we have up on the screen, we'll flip through. Happy to answer any questions that you have. But as the manager mentioned, what we're really talking about is a follow-up to your budget and CIP process that was adopted this spring for, again, some borrowing and financing for capital projects. Important to note that anytime a local government in Virginia is going out to borrow for dollars, it's really for capital projects, and so making investments in the town as opposed to maybe borrowing for other purposes, certainly not any operating costs, things of that variety. So we'll go page by page here and certainly happy to answer any questions. But again, we appreciate at Davenport being able to work with you and be here. You may recall my colleague David Rose has been here, I think, multiple times before you, and so appreciate being able to be with you this evening. And so to Robert's point, we've really gone through is a process to go competitively bid up to $6 million to go finance capital projects per your capital improvement program. So those projects include two fire trucks, some water line work, a variety of other sort of sidewalks, other things, all within your adopted CIP, as well as the ability to go take a portion of that and purchase a building in the town. And so all of those are contained within this. The intent here is that all this would be what we call interim financing. So you may recall, very recently, some of the interim financing that was done for the land purchase, very similar concept here. You, as a town, enjoy very strong financial standing. You have good reserves. And given where interest rates are right now, what a financing like this does is gives you the flexibility to go take on these projects, do the projects, see how the next couple of budget years go. And then to the extent that there is a want or a need based on your budget to go finance it over longer term, you can do that. Or to the extent that we find ourselves in a position to just pay these off in a couple of years, we can do that as well. So part of the intent here is to give you a lot of flexibility as you work your way through the capital program, especially given how favorable rates are, and we'll talk about those specific rates here in a couple of minutes. So on page two, in terms of the background, I won't read this word for word, but basically there's two different financings here. There's what we call an A and a B. The A portion is tax-exempt. That's the biggest piece of it, up to about $5.5 million. The B portion is taxable, and that's just per bond counsel, who's with us, Stephen over in the corner there, just their read on some of those individual projects. So the vast majority of this is on a tax-exempt basis, which gives you, as a town, the lowest possible interest rate. One little, small piece, about $500,000 on what we call a taxable basis.
At taxable basis, is that gonna be the real estate piece more than likely?
Yes, sir. That's correct. So let's give you a couple of quick visuals in terms of interest rates. What we're really showing here is that we are currently and remain in a very nice interest rate environment. And so you've probably seen that in the news in terms of the variations in interest rates. If you are a good credit, as we say, as the town is, you're in very good financial shape, you've got an ability to go borrow at very attractive interest rates. The corollary to that, which also works to your advantage, is that short-term rates are very attractive, meaning that the cash you have on hand in the bank can earn an interest rate that is as much, if not higher, than the interest rate that we'll do on the borrowing here. So that's an important consideration in terms of how you fund and pay for these things in that the, call it the cash in the bank right now, the town's reserves, have the ability to actually earn a higher interest rate than the interest rate that we'll talk about in the borrowing here. This page just gives you that taxable component of it, but similar story, historically speaking, still very, very favorable interest rates. And as we get here, we'll talk in more specificity about what you have in front of you. So these are the real results of this bidding process. Again, this has been competitively bid to local, national, regional banking institutions. We cast a very wide net. And so what we have are three good proposals, Truist, Webster Bank, and Zion's Bank. The best of those proposals is Webster Bank, and it's the best. We say that, and it's our recommendation to you because they're the lowest interest rates of any of those. They also provide very, very flexible prepayment provisions and other terms and conditions that align with what we need to do here. You can see the interest rates at the bottom of the page. 2024A is the larger component, that $5.5 million piece. That is a fixed interest rate of 4.4%. And so you know with certainty that rate will be fixed for basically the next three years at a 4.4%. Again, the corollary back to what you're able to earn in your reserves in the bank, the LGIP program is earning right now about 5.5%. So the dollars you have in the bank can earn plus or minus about one percentage point more than the actual borrowing here. The other component, the Bs, much smaller, roughly half a million dollars at about a 570, also a fixed rate. We know that, and so you'd have that level of certainty. And then we talk about the flexibility and the prepayment side of things. Basically, the bank would allow us after next April, so we'd have a year we couldn't prepay it, but after next April, we'd be able to prepay to start with with a small penalty, and then after that, be able to do that with no penalty whatsoever. So our recommendation here is, again, the Webster Bank rate, lowest interest rates. They're fixed, they're known, gives you the prepayment flexibility. It allows you to do those things that are involved within your budget, in your capital program, with a lot of flexibility going forward. The bottom of the page here, just maybe a little disclaimer, the Webster Bank folks, the loans are not technically fully credit-approved, but we know them very well. They've prescreened everything, so there is one more step they have to go through. We're pretty comfortable they're gonna be able to get there, and they've given us that comfort. And so what we really would be asking, certainly after any questions that we can address of the mayor and council, is adoption of resolution this evening. That's the only thing we need of council. And then we can then work with your staff, with your bond counsel, town attorney, to kind of move this forward and probably close by the end of the fiscal year, which comes up for June 30. So there then is our next steps there, as I just probably stated, so I won't repeat myself there in terms of that page. But that really is what we have this evening, and mayor, members of council, happy to answer any questions or any clarification that you'd like.
Kyle, I've got, just kind of not so much about the specific bids or the timeline, but debt in general, I'm sure you know this because you work with communities all over the state, maybe even more than that. I don't know how far out you go. But a lot of times people will see debt and will see the town talking about debt, and you think, oh, that means, you know, there's a money problem or a fiscal problem. When you talked about one issue that's important, which is that right now we're actually earning more interest than what it would cost, you know, to service this debt. The other part I was thinking about when you talked about that and going all the way back to when I was in school learning about all this, you know, there's definitely a good argument to be made, too, that one reason that you use debt to finance capital projects is the fact that you can spread out kind of the time, not just the time of the town paying for it, but even the people that are helping pay for it. So if you have, for example, we're gonna buy a couple of fire trucks, you know, they typically last 20, 25, maybe even 30 years. And it, the debt is a way, I guess I'm asking this as a question to make sure you agree, but one of the arguments for financing something like this with debt rather than paying cash for a fire truck is that people who aren't even here yet, that might move here in, say, five, 10, 15 years, they can then help pay for it because they're gonna benefit from it rather than having the people that are here today, that again, might not be here in 10 years, pay for all of it.
Yeah, you're exactly right. We call that in public finance, we call that intergenerational equity insofar as if we paid for all that with the cash we have on hand right now, the taxpayers today would be bearing the full brunt of that cost. What borrowing for it allows you to do, exactly as you said, is to spread those costs over the users and the taxpayers that will benefit from the use of that asset or that investment over lifespan. And so the things that you're financing are things that have a long, useful life. You've historically had very good cash flow in the town, and so you've been able to limit your borrowing to things that are, call it bigger, and last a longer time, which is a good practice, versus borrowing for things that are, you know, kind of smaller and you use up a little bit quicker. I would make an analogy in terms of local government borrowing to, it's more like your mortgage than it is your credit card. And so you think about if you've been fortunate enough to own a home, you'd probably be purchased that home with a mortgage with the idea this is gonna be an asset for myself as long as, you know, a roof over your head for a long time period. Most people don't necessarily have the cash or the assets to be able to pay for their first home, you know, with cash. And so this is much more like a mortgage with a fixed interest rate and known payments, and you're financing a series of assets that'll last a long time. And that's really kind of the personal finance corollary to how local governments and in town, in this particular case, the town goes about borrowing for dollars. And the other piece of it is keeping within good policy, good financial practice. You've got good financial policies. You follow those financial policies. And so you also check those various boxes as well in terms of just the thought process of borrowing for dollars.
Thank you. So run that back a couple of slides on the 4.425%. That's fixed for three years? Is that what I'm reading correctly?
That's correct.
Approximately three years?
Yes.
So what happens year four, year five, et cetera, if we still have these entities? The 64 acres or whatever?
Yeah, so what you'll have the ability to do is, and to your point, councilman, we'll be able to assess over the next couple of years. As your budget progresses, as the overall economy progresses, et cetera, what the right strategy there is. Because you also have, as we've kind of mentioned here, you have very strong reserves in the town.
Right. I mean, this is a glorified line of credit. I understand that.
And so you could, and I'll finish that and you can cut me off, but over the next couple of years, you'll be able to make that decision. Do we take some cash and pay some of this stuff down? Do we borrow for a little bit longer time period? Do we do some combo thereof? So you've got a lot of options available to you.
So we're just buying ourselves time, essentially?
Yeah, buying yourself time and not using the cash right now while it's earning such a favorable rate.
Okay.
Other questions by council, staff? This being a public hearing, we have no one else signed up to speak. You just need a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Yes, sir.
Has everybody had a chance to review the resolution in their packet?
Yes. The only concern I have is, I mean, these rates are pretty darn good, seeing rates every day, but we don't have a true commitment from Webster yet, correct? I mean, I know you say you feel confident, but.
Yeah.
You don't have a true proposal.
No, they've given us a hard and fast term sheet, and so.
Okay, so we do have a term sheet.
That's correct.
Okay. By what you said earlier, I was a little concerned because you said they went through basically pre-flight, but they haven't made it to a term sheet yet.
Yeah, no, I apologize. We have a very definitive term sheet from them.
All right, good. All right. I'm all right. Thank you.
So does anybody want to make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Help me.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? This requires a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Billy W. Stockton.
Yes.
Council Member A Ralph Casey.
Yes.
Council Member David K. Clements.
Yes.
Council Member J. Tyler Lee.
Yes.
Council Member Benjamin K. Mullins.
Yes.
Council Member Mark H. Newbill.
Yes.
Mayor C. Holland Perdue the Third.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The resolution passed. Next, we have the North Main Street Planning Project. Mr. Bernard will present.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. You might recall that we've been making progress on the North Main Revitalization Program over the past couple of years. We had initially submitted an application right around two years ago to the state DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, for a planning grant. And we've been following the state's timeline, which involved a pre-contract period where we had some public input meetings. And then we were awarded the planning grant, so we were able to hire professional services. So we put it out to bid, and we ultimately hired Hill Studio out of Roanoke. And since January, they've been working on this planning grant for us. And it's involved multiple opportunities for public input and talking directly with a lot of property owners along the North Main Corridor. So we're at the point now where we're at the tail end of the planning process, so we have this plan. And the reason why we went through the state's lengthy planning process is so that we would then be eligible for the larger construction funding, which is referred to as the Community Improvement Grant, or CIG. So we will be applying for that grant later this week. And it's important to remember that grants are important because that helps us implement big, long-term projects that are impactful to the community by using the state and federal funds versus having the local taxpayers bear all that burden. But that does mean that we have to keep two big things in mind. One is the timeline. Even if we're awarded, it takes a while to have access to that funding. So it takes four to six months to hear back about the grant, and then it's another four to six months of environmental review because this is ultimately federal funding that goes through the state. So that means we have a lot of hoops to jump through, a lot of i's to dot, a lot of t's to cross. And the other important thing to remember about grants, especially state and federal grants, is that we do have to fall within their guidelines as to what the grant funding can be used for. So we can, they are very specific about what items are eligible for funding. So even though we have, you know, we, most of us drive the North Main Corridor, if not multiple times a day, every day. So we have very specific ideas about the corridor, but we do have to keep in mind that we can only use the grant funding for what the funding agency says that is eligible. So with that, I will kick it off to Mr. David Hill from Hill Studio. His company, Hill Studio, has a long history in Rocky Mount. When we were glad when they were selected for this plan because they've done quite a few, or a lot of downtown revitalizations, including Rocky Mount's Uptown Revitalization 20 years ago. But not only that, their plans have a good track record of getting funded, which is the ultimate purpose of going through this process, so.
Thank you, Daniel, and thank you all for having me here tonight. I'll explain the details of the Rocky Mount North Main Street Community Improvement Grant application. And I'll explain it in the process that we use with Department of Housing and Community Development. First thing that Virginia DHCD requests is that we go through the project area, identify the project area, and identify some of the existing conditions that should be remedied in the corridor. And the corridor in this case was identified, we started at US 220 North, right there where North Main comes into US 220. We come south 1.8 miles, all through what most folks around call North Main Street, all the way down to the Bridge and the Depot. That's the project area. And this particular grant says we know, not only is it a linear grant, And, um, this particular grant, uh, says we know you, not only is it a linear grant, but, you know, how far back does it reach? And it was decided we should go one property back, uh, from the center line of the roadway. So in many places along North Main, it, it's kind of just one property back from the street. Some of those properties are pretty big, so you'll see it, it, the kind of boundary line gets big and then gets small, but it's one property line back all along, uh, the North Main Corridor. So, because of the way that this grant is written with the old HUD guidelines, the thing, the next thing that we do is identify what, what is, uh, defined in the legislation as, um, blighting structures. These are structures that either have physical, uh, issues or, uh, they can, there can also be economic blight, which might mean, you know, they're empty. These are businesses that doesn't have, that don't have anybody in them. And so this chart, uh, that you see here, uh, notes, oh, a, about a dozen properties that, that have blighting issues. These could be problems with, you know, uh, uh, troubles with the, um, uh, the, the bricks, the mortar, the windows, et cetera. Um, and so what we've done is to identify these, and then we have to, through the use of the grant, remedy them. So, so the idea is to, to clean up blight. That's really what this grant is about. So, uh, part of the work then is to, to go back and do a little bit of deeper dive on research, uh, in both the demographics, the housing situation in Rocky Mount, and the commercial opportunities in the corridor like this. And what we found through our research, and I'm sure this is not a surprise, that there, uh, that there, there actually is a big market in Rocky Mount for, uh, more, um, uh, we say, uh, housing that would be a, a certain budget, you know? A lot, a lot of folks tend to be, uh, cost burdened in their house, and if there was a, a little better priced housing available, there would be a lot of people who would like to have it. So either rental or, um, or, uh, to own. We also found, and this was quite interesting to us, that there's a, a, within the thirty-minute drive time, and particularly within the fifteen-minute drive time to Rocky Mount, there's an extraordinary commercial opportunity here. In fact, uh, in a conservative, um, approach of saying twenty percent of the total market capture would be about a hundred and forty-five thousand square feet of, of retail space. And that, that's the size of a small shopping center that you could actually introduce in, along Main Street, and it would actually, uh, do well. And, and some of those topics, restaurants, plenty of room for new restaurants, general merchandise, health and personal care, that's things like pharmacies or clothing. Uh, some real market niches that would do well along the North Main Corridor. So this is a very positive side, and I think this would, this would be very important for Department of Housing and Community Development to say, you know, there's a future here in North Main, and, and we just need to fix a few things, and it'll be, uh, uh, well on its way toward, uh, this future. So, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but on that slide, um, that, that hundred forty-five thousand square feet, that's only true because the market we're talking about is not the five thousand people that live in Rocky Mount.
Right.
Just give everybody a little bit of a peek at that?
Right, and think about this, and, and, you know, that's interesting, because this grant program is really written for small towns, you know, that might be out in the middle of nowhere. One of the things that, that Rocky Mount has a great advantage is, it's not just the five thousand people that live in Rocky Mount, but it's the hundred, over a hundred thousand that live within the half-hour drive time. You know, you, you all, a- and you see this with, with certain businesses that are very successful in Rocky Mount, you know? People drive a half hour to get here to, to go to some of your businesses, and, and some of those areas are, are remarkably, um, they're remarkably wealthy. The Smith Mountain Lake area, for example, the whole South, uh, Roanoke City, Roanoke County, uh, Martinsville, think about that. You've got a, a remarkable capture area in Rocky Mount for the right kind of businesses. And so that's what makes this, you know, five thousand people alone couldn't make this work, but you have a much larger audience that you can capture. So, with that in mind, uh, we have, um, six different, we call them, uh, uh, well, six different projects within the Community Improvement Grant Application for construction. And then the seventh part of it is administration. The first is the facade program, uh, second, and I'm gonna go through each of these in detail, uh, car wash measures, initial streetscape, uh, to better link the neighborhoods to the corridor, industrial heritage murals, wayfinding, and a community park trailhead. I'll, I'll describe each of these, uh, in a little bit more detail. The first one is the facade program, and, uh, as you, you might remember, about twenty years ago, downtown went through this, where, um, a number of, uh, businesses volunteered to be part of the program, and, uh, we used the federal money to, uh, to help restore their facade, bought signage, things like this. And it, and collectively for, for Main Street, it really fixed up the appearance of, and really helped that economy. So, the challenge, uh, is to remedy the blight, you know? A blight's an issue that's impacted a handful of well-established businesses. The slimy sees establishments curb appeal and attracts from the district's attractiveness and ability to thrive. So the solution is remedy the blight through the facade improvements program, focus on signage, curb appeal, creating a vibrant welcoming feel for the business. So, uh, ten different, uh, facades are in the program, and they're all throughout the corridor. These people, uh, volunteered these properties and said, yes, we would like to participate. And so, uh, I'll show you, uh, five examples of, of the kinds of improvements that we're talking about. First one is Mama Sarah's. This has, uh, got a new business in it, and, uh, restaurant business. And, uh, you can see the building here, and so the types of, uh, uh, facade programs we're talking about is repair, replace the, uh, business sign, repair the damaged brick, uh, lighting with some new wall sconces and, uh, landscape ground lighting, and then help the landscape. This is something different from the downtown projects, you know, out here in the corridor, you can really work in the landscape area, so that was the first one. Uh, Gustler's Alignment Auto Care, uh, the Gustler's, uh, want to, um, all the exterior walls, soffits, gutters, downspouts will be repainted, lighting under the eaves, they get the landscape, uh, in the front as well, new signs, um, and, uh, new planter boxes, things like this. Uh, Pizza King, this one was really kind of fun, uh, uh, they wanted to add a new, um, uh, little front porch timber with lighting so that people can dine outside. Little new brick seat, paint the, uh, building surface and the signs, uh, and then repair the walls, uh, and, and the signage. So this would be really a, a cool, uh, little, uh, update. And so, you know, in the, and out here in the, in the North Main, you get some large buildings like this, but the same, same kind of techniques apply. You know, the, the landscaping can make a big difference for a facade like this, little different sign, um, little different screen fences and things like this to really make that, uh, kind of pop and, and look, uh, pretty exciting. Then one final one, the, uh, Franklin Welding Equipment, those guys are interested in, uh, new metal siding and, uh, new, uh, building, uh, sign there that's much easier to read. So, a, a total of ten of these are in the program. This is one of the, uh, DHCD has told us, this is one of the most important parts of this program because it shows that at least ten businesses are willing and, and very interested in making this a better corridor and want to stay, you know? So, the next part of this is the car wash, and I'm sure you all know the car wash, uh, along in here. Um, we, uh, it, it's a, that, that one has economic blight. It's a derelict former car wash occupies a parcel that has high redevelopment potential. This blighted building represents a prime location for a future business. So the idea would be with the grant, improve the curb appeal right up next to the street with tree plantings and sidewalk improvements. That'll also connect the neighborhood to the adjacent market, C mark, and then screen, partially screen the car wash with the plantings. And so, in this diagram, you see the, the red goes around the property line of the car wash, and, and what we would do right away with this grant is put in the new street trees along the front, fix the sidewalk through there that goes to the C mark. And then that'll help, uh, the, the visual appeal of that while they work on, uh, trying to sell the property. Linking the neighborhoods, the, uh, community representatives from Department of Housing and Community Development noted that, uh, you know, even though it's a very active, busy Main Street, a lot of neighborhoods on both sides, and these folks need to get to the businesses on Main Street. So, part of this grant will be to go ahead and put in handicapped access, uh, at these couple of places, and we can, we can actually adjust the final location of these, but two places. Circle Drive area, the Goodview Drive area, so that handicapped people can get across the Main Street. It'll also have the crosswalks with the flashing light attenuator, so, you know, when you, you want to cross, you push this, the lights come on and flash so that people driving know that and, and stop and let you get by. Um, now, industrial heritage murals, it, we had a design workshop, and one of, one of the things that people brought up is, uh, you know, Rocky Mount actually is really lucky, and it has a very active industrial corridor through here. Um, but, you know, because the industrial land use, parts of the corridor are kind of utilitarian in the visual character, don't provide that kind of commercial welcoming appeal. But, if you can create highly visible, place-based artwork that showcases Rocky Mount's heritage and storied past, celebrate that local history and culture, and use this public art on these ordinary structures, so they become gateways to Rocky Mount. So the, the places that, uh, that, uh, sort of were, were part of that said, yeah, uh, look at our buildings, these tend to be clustered down towards the depot. And I'll, and also, uh, we, we couldn't let the bridge, uh, get through this without looking at the bridge as well, because that's kind of ordinary. So let's look at a couple of examples. You know, one of them is, uh, and again, these are from aerial photos, but you get the idea because it shows the buildings, you know? Kind of bring back some of that interest. These aren't, these are just design workshop murals. We're gonna go through a much more formal process of choosing the right mural. But, uh, and even some of these great big buildings, you know, make some murals that celebrate that industrial heritage, particularly the building industries, which are right around in this area in Rocky Mount. And then with the bridge, which has the Jersey barriers, uh, uh, you know, kind of work that with your existing brand and, and, uh, kind of make that a welcoming gateway into the downtown. Um, wayfinding, you know, over the last few years, you implemented a very successful, uh, uh, branding and wayfinding program, and the idea is to extend that out into the corridor uh, with signage that, that uses your palette and directs people to things, uh, in the corridor. And then the community park trailhead access, you know, there's a, a, along North Main, uh, it, it's not real visible, a lot of, uh, local people point this out, but there's a uh, a right-of-way that goes back toward your community park and toward the, um, toward the YMCA, toward the Essex Center. And the idea would be, there's currently no access to that community park from North Main, but work on connectivity and, and put a trail through there to connect the neighborhood. Uh, and so that's the idea here, provide a little parking, uh, and, and so what you see in this diagram, uh, this is looking straight down at Plan View, North Main is going north to south there. The little blue line would indicate a new trail connection from North Main to the current loop trail, which is the orange triangle that goes for about point nine miles, uh, and connects the recreation center and the Franklin County Y. And so that way, uh, here's a little detail right up on North Main, where we would, uh, connect, uh, uh, and have a little bit of parking here, have a trailhead kiosk, little split rail fence, and we keep the, uh, the adjacent access to the, to the, um, uh, nonprofit there that's next door. So, um, so all these initiatives, um, we put together the cost of these initiatives, it's about one point, uh, one million eighty-six thousand two hundred dollars. And the next chart shows the amount of federal money that we'd be using, would be exactly a million dollars. We would have eighty-six thousand in match, but it's not cash match. It's match that is, uh, some staff time, uh, some match that is using some, uh, existing, um, money that is in, uh, particularly the downtown, uh, account for signage and murals. And then finally, some, a force account work on the trailhead access to match the contractor part. So about eighty-six thousand dollars in match, and that's really to make your application more, um, competitive. Um, the community development block grant money for really impoverished communities will, eh, there's no match required, you know? And, and some places just ask for the million dollars. Because of Rocky Mount's, you know, pretty sound financial position, we'd recommend you chip in a little bit to show, uh, that kind of, um, you know, that, that you kind of get some skin in the game. So, um, so that's really the end of the presentation, and, uh, I thank you very much. Been a pleasure to work with you and your citizens over the last six months to put this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, David. Any questions, David? Alright, uh, this being a public hearing, we have no one signed up to speak at this part of the public hearing. Um, the Community and Economic Development Committee met earlier this evening, uh, Chairman Mullins, did you guys send a recommendation to council?
Yeah, absolutely. We recommend that you move forward with the application. Hopefully we can get some tax dollars back here in Rocky Mount.
So, so the recommendation was to adopt the resolution?
That's correct.
We have a recommendation.
Second.
You want to make a motion?
Oh, you want me to make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion. I thought that's what I did.
A motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll second.
Have a second. Alright, any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution? Uh, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next we'll move to the new business tonight. Uh, the sludge collection system replacement at the water treatment plant. Mr. Wood, you will be presenting?
Alright. The only thing worse than talking about sludge at the water plant is sludge at the wastewater plant, so we're at least not doing that tonight. This item, and, and, uh, Kevin can step in and, and help me with some of the details if y'all have some specific questions about timing. This has been talked about for quite a while. Do you remember how long, Kevin? It's been, you know, three years or so that we've been trying to, to, to get the, this system replaced out at the water treatment plant, and it does exactly what you think. There's a, there's a point in the process where, Kevin's gonna tell me I'm saying this wrong, but I think I'll get the general idea. With, there's, there's an area where there's, uh, tanks or ponds essentially that hold water, and, and things are gonna settle out of that, and so that it's gonna be dirt or different things that are in the water to make the water cleaner as it gets into the system. So there has to be a way, once those things fall to the bottom of these tanks, you've got to be able to kind of scoop it out of there essentially and get it out of the way. So that's the basic idea. I know I didn't get it right, Kevin, but it's, it's close to that. So the, the system that we're talking about, um, we had put in the budget, the capital improvement plan actually had a budget of, get to the right page here. There was six hundred thousand, about six hundred thousand dollars included in the capital improvement plan for this budget year that council approved. Um, we got the bids for it, and as tends to happen these days, the bids came in more like nine hundred thousand dollars. And so the recommendation from staff is to go with the low bid, which is from a company called Premier Group Limited for nine hundred nineteen thousand dollars. And there would be, um, capital funds that would, part of the budget was already budgeted, and then part of it, uh, Vincent isn't here tonight, but he recommended that the additional three hundred and eighteen or so thousand dollars that is needed for the project uh, be appropriated from the general fund unappropriated balance, so essentially use part of our fund balance to pay the, the, um, remainder of the project, and then that would allow the project to start out at the water treatment plant. So if anyone has any questions about this, how the system works or anything like that, Kevin's here to talk to us about it. It's a, definitely an upgrade from the system that we have now. Uh, the system, how old's the system, Kevin?
The original, uh, like the.
Yeah, so.
Original to the plant like they do.
It's a little over forty years. So we've gotten good use out of it, but it's, it, and the, and the newer systems are more efficient, and they'll allow the, the staff out at the plant to, to do some things that they can't do now, which is all good for those of us that, you know, depend on that water every day.
Actually, part of the system is that already failing, and we have removed it, it is out of the basins. So part of the original system's already gone, and the only way we can get that sludge out is to actually drain the basins now and wash them out manually with fire.
Which, as, exactly how it sounds, is not a very efficient way to do it, so.
And the new system is gonna be big enough for the growth of Rocky Mount in the future?
In other words, the system's designed for the plant like it is now.
Gotcha.
Or you have to, you have to add basins in there to be able to increase your plant capacity.
I'll make a motion to move forward with Vincent's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries.
Next we have a closed meeting this evening. In order to enter into the closed session, uh, under Virginia Code Section cited as Section two point two dash three seven one one A point one and three, I need a motion to go into the closed meeting under the cited code.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session under both cited codes.
Thank you. Have a motion, do have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? This motion carries. Thank you for attending the meeting. After closed session, council will return to the council chambers.
Yep, Mr. Stockton, we're gonna hang up on you and then call you back.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Alright, sir.
Yeah. We may look at that. It's far away.
Yeah, it was kind of hard to read because it was so small, but like pictures and stuff, that's.
I just turned around and looked at Davenport.
I mean. But, I mean, usually Davenport gives us a book.